Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Public District Governing Board. Today is Thursday, February 25th, 2016. Time is 4:12 PM. We'll begin with the roll call. It is Mr. Jackson.
George Jackson.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Sundberg. And Bonnie Snead. All members are present. We have a floor. I'd like to make motions using the executive session for Item 2A, Discussion or Consultation for Legal Advice to the Attorney or Attorneys of the Public Body Regarding the Search Process for a New Superintendent of the Superior Unified Full District Pursuant to ARS 38-4, 31.038, 3, and 4. We have a second.
One second.
Call this a favor and indicate by saying yes.
Aye.
And motion has been filed. Five zero. Okay, we're going into executive session. We're over here. Okay, we're going to reconvene to special meeting and discuss the unified public district governing board. Today is Thursday, February 25th. The time is 5:58. And the next item on our agenda is Item 4A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Proceeding with the Search Process for a New Superior Unified Full District Superintendent. I have nothing to present on this other than I'll let the board members, other board members on the comments they have on it. Comment?
How do you know? We can start.
I'll start with the announcement that we are going to defer superintendent search until the district has an opportunity to respond to this point.
No, that's not.
No?
No, I don't, that's almost like a motion. And that's not what we all necessarily agree on.
Okay, so we will have discussion.
Okay.
I'll look at. Go ahead.
Because there were no votes taken in the event, right? Make that clear. So, a deferral, I'm looking at you for like, just keep me careful here. A deferral will take a week minimum and, but is necessary and because of, based on legal time. At that point, we're put into the first week of March, probably end of the first week of March, at which point we need to come back and have a report out. So now we're in the second week, into first week, second week of March of kicking off a superintendent, permanent superintendent search process. That other districts are now, in that same timeframe, they're closing their superintendent search processes. They're done when we're just starting. So, because most districts kick theirs off in November, December, January.
Can you give examples?
Kyrene did theirs in November. Phoenix Union started theirs in December or January, I think. There are many. I have a very long. So my concern at this point is racing through the superintendent search process that was all, that ASDA process was already an accelerated process to begin with, and we discussed it with them back on January 7th. Now we're starting it in March and we're going to have to compress it even more. And my concern is that this board will appear as if we are moving so fast. We took great criticism because of how fast we went through the interim search process, but I personally defended it. It was what needed to be done. I don't believe that we can defend racing through a permanent search process in the same manner. So what I would like to tee up for discussion is based on the legal advice we gave to extend Dr. Birdwell's contract, defer the search process until next year, let all the dust settle, and then come back and do a very thoughtful, all-inclusive, permanent search process next year. Thank you for not, glad I got through that. Stay legal.
Ms. Hartman.
So, and I am absolutely trying to balance efficiency with effectiveness. So, not trying to speed through a process, kind of balance, but getting to a good outcome. So my question is, I've heard that it wouldn't take any longer than the beginning of next week because most of it was already done. And I also heard, or read, I think there was an email that said you had already talked to ASDA and they were fine with, they didn't see the delay compromising the outcome for two weeks, I think you said in that email.
I don't remember the exact part, but I did have a conversation with them in which I said, you know, there's concern about an accelerated process. Is this still going to be a viable search that can be done? And what I was told is that, yep, they can still do it. And I think they told you before, but if you got to the point of getting to, you know, this is kind of a fluid process, and I'm going to ask this, I can't really go with all the detail, but, but if you got to a point when you're getting close to, you know, staying and you weren't happy, you could always look at extending the test. And by the same token, you could have a conversation with Dr. Birdwell at some point.
Okay, so let me just get this down to just two clarifying questions. One, is it possible to get to conclude the investigation by the middle of next week?
Yes.
Okay. And ASDA responded to you and said that this delay that we're talking about right now, not assuming it goes beyond next week, but we could get through this process and still get to the same outcome, then it wouldn't compromise the process.
So the sequence is a little bit off because I had that conversation with ASDA before we had our legal advice regarding looking into the claim. So I didn't, I just said to them, look, there's concern about, are we behind the eight ball now that we're getting to the end of February, early March? And they walked me through, yes, we can still get it done if that's what the board wants to do. Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, I think so.
It was just a little bit.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Kirby.
So, so there's no ambiguity. Do you want to give us, are you prepared to give us a date of when the report will be finished for this board?
I'm not going to be killed.
Just so we're clear on that first.
And like I said, I have done some of the, quite a bit of the legwork already.
And then maybe, does anyone else know off the top of their head, I should know this, when is spring break?
April 4th.
Everybody's ready. Only me. Geez, don't everyone speak at once.
I have one question. My, just for the first thing, you might possibly be a factor. My understanding that following the investigation, as you called, there might be an additional depth where other bids, maybe another RST process or an oil bid process might follow that. It might.
So you can, you can decide to take another look at vendors that you choose. We talked about.
Some of that, just that decision might, it's quite depending on the investigators. Is that, incorrect as they can?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Okay, so there might be another step beyond just up to the investigation.
That's possible.
Also, it's always been my understanding that districts, well, our district, I know, has a date for administrators to give notice that they will not be returning or not signing a contract at a date like April 15th?
We have to notify administrators if we're not going to certify administrators if we're not going to certify.
Okay.
They don't have to tell us?
Okay, is that statutory or is that our policy?
And I always get this stuff because it changed a couple of years ago, but in our agreement, our administrative agreement, is Pam here?
No.
March 31st or?
Statutory for the April 15th for administrators.
Right. But our SAA agreement has an earlier date, right? I can look it up.
For teachers, yes.
You asked about administrators.
I did, yeah, but.
It's that, that agreement does have a slightly earlier date in it. What went away is teachers no longer have that date on their 20th day.
So statutory, April 15th is the last day to the district, but any district can go earlier than that, correct?
Yeah.
Again, yeah, I mean, obviously a big factor of this is the season, the timeframe. This came up before we even really started this process. We knew we were buddying up against it already, and here we are looking at March, and we haven't started. And to me, it's, my understanding is we're at the end of this season, if you want to call it that.
Can I say that point?
Kirby.
So, with ASDA's search timeline that they provided, basically has all of their activities completed by April the 8th.
And that was the one where they were assuming we were starting on February 1st?
Correct, February 18th.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so you have a date, let me just go, I'm going to roll this all together. Do you have a date of when you feel comfortable and you can have?
Oh, sure.
But don't, but hey, that's seriously, well, I don't want you to feel like you have to rush.
No, I don't either.
This is too important.
I don't. And the thing is, I've done, again, a lot of the work already. So, Thursday the 3rd.
Okay, so Thursday, they can have more information then?
Yeah. Okay, so Thursday the 3rd would be a full two weeks after February 18th, which was the original start date. So we're now two weeks behind on what was originally a seven-week process. So if we, which was, which is aggressive, I think, to begin with. We just got this process this week, a couple of days ago. So I had not seen this until just a few days ago. I will say I'm very uncomfortable with a seven-week process to select a superintendent who will be with us for the next, uh, three years, most likely. So now we're looking at April, if we just slide the two weeks, we're now looking at April 22nd for this to be finished, which now I'm going to come back to, remember Pearlberg's point of administrator contracts. Remember Hartman and President Snead have said multiple times that they're concerned of how thin our administration ranks are, how thin our benches, and if we need to recruit principals, if we need to recruit new administrators, we are way past this April 15th statutory deadline and definitely past any earlier deadlines that other districts might have. So we will be, the recruiting effort will be hampered because prospective recruits will not know who they will be working for. And my guess is if you don't know who you're going to be working for, you're likely not to take that risk.
I would answer, I would answer that, they never know who you're going to be working for. There are so many different things that can happen.
It's usually by April 15th.
I'm not sure I would.
No.
Yeah. No, 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 I'm just saying, there are so many, so many different factors. I would hope that anybody that would want to come to work with us wants to come and do the job here, regardless of who you pick.
I would, I would hope so, too, because the reality is, people want to come work for certain people. If it's perceived as a troubled district or a weak leader, you're not going to get the same quality of recruits as you are someone who is perceived as being very strong, being a strong leader with experience that you could actually learn something from. So I just, I disagree with you. Having recruited quite by prior life, it's important to know who you're going to be working for.
And I think it's a really valid point. One really valid point. I'll get to another one in a little bit. And Ms. Pearlberg.
Well, I agree. It is incredibly, you know, it's an incredibly important job for our board, it's the most important job choosing our leaders. To rush through it, especially what this district's been through over the last few months, and the uncertainty and the question, adding on this expedited rush research, following a need to look into a citizen's claim about the search itself, I mean, it just feels incredibly uncomfortable to me in this, in this frame. Not just looking at the past, but let's look at our future. Let's look at what else we have to do by June. We have to do the budget, we have to do the capital overrides, we have to look at the bond. We have all of that work as well, also incredibly important. I'm struggling, I would say that flat out, and it's time to say, I am struggling to wrap my brain about how, in the time span that we have, we can commit to truly making this search real meaningful. And, I mean, either it's going to look like just an exercise, you know, that we're rushing through and we're not serious about it, or it's going to be highly questionable that, you know, I've seen the foregone conclusion and all, you know, all those things that we know, quite honestly, we have perceptions of their ass. I am struggling also to understand why would we put ourselves in this situation when we have an incredibly talented independent superintendent that we could extend that contract to, get through all these difficult jobs we need to get through, we have to get through? And I, I personally am comfortable under that leadership, doing all of those things, and then we can address it in the fall. More thoughtful.
One of the reasons that I give you when you say sales is the house, I think every step in the way, we have also told our community, all of our stakeholders, they would have input into the process. And when we last met, that was still the case. And then this meeting was called, and I would like to reassure our community members that no, again, that no foregone conclusions have been made, and that, you know, deals without sending out in public and talking about it didn't happen. And so, I'm, I'm really concerned that I made promises that there would be community input, full community input, and.
If you're laying that community input, I guess I'm not, I'm just not following it, whether we have it now rushed very, very quickly, that might even impede that, that feedback and that input because we're so rushed, or doing it later. And I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how we're, I don't know about the promise that's made to communities, but saying we're going to do this properly, correctly, and in a meaningful way later, I don't see how that's breaking any commitments that this board has made.
Well, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable addressing that today, pending the outcome of what we learn by next week.
Why?
Because why even, why even have, you know, why even look into the citizen's claim if we're not going to, you know, if we're going to just reverse a contract that we made a little over a month ago?
We're not reversing it. We're not admitting it. We're dis, we're deferring it.
Deferring, you're talking about a search.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the natural contract that we have with our mutual commitment.
I want to clarify. I don't see us saying we're going to do this search later as a decision to break the contract to do it later, right? I mean.
Okay, I'm having trouble with the timeline. Ms. Hartman?
So here's a thought, because I don't see these as two mutually exclusive ideas, actually. I don't see it as an either or, because we're all about the same thing, which is about getting the best person in the position, having the best option, and not being rushed through the process. So, is it possible to, subject to this investigation, based on that, continue, if it's appropriate, right, based on the results of the investigation, continue to move forward if that's what we choose to do on March 3rd? Move forward with it. At that point in time, you can report with it. ASDA will come back and say, you know what, no longer applies, can't do it, because they're going to be the first, they're going to want to be successful for it. So if they don't feel as though the timeline's reasonable, they'll let us know. So, and if we go through the process, I remember specifically asking the question, I don't know who asked it, but somebody asked, what if we don't come up with a conclusion by June 30th? And they said, we're here until the job is done. So, so they'll either say yes or no, they can or can't do it, they want to be as successful as we are, and if they say yes, we trust that they are qualified, they know what the process looks like, they can get us a result, and if they can't, they've already committed that, so they're here until the job's done, of which then we go through another cycle. I mean, that's just how it'll work. I mean, so I just see that, yes, to both scenarios.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
Okay, so let's be real. ASDA's not going to come back and say, oh, sorry, we can't do this. They're going to make every effort, as they have, to tell us what they think we want to hear. And I, I say that with great love of ASDA, but based on the conversation that we just had in exec, I am going to have a difficult time relying on that when I don't feel good about it. I, this is, this is not ASDA's decision to tell us what the right process is. This is our decision to tell ASDA what the right process is. And to go back to the timeline, right now, because in the current ASDA proposal, the position was supposed to be posted, what is today, George?
25th.
Tomorrow. If, if we slide this, given the timeframe with what Michelle Marshall is going to do for us, we're now looking at posting at March 11th, posting the position, March 11th. Other searches, if you go look at them, which I have done, taken the time to do it, other searches are closing March 1st. So, we are going to be getting second. We are going to be getting all the restovers at this point. There's no way we are going to have an incredibly strong candidate pool. So then it makes you, then you have to ask yourself, well, then why are we doing that?
Can I respond? I, I didn't have the same takeaway from ASDA, or any vendor. I feel as though they always want to put their best work forward, and they will not set themselves up for failure, nor will they set us up for failure. This original timeline says February 26th they were going to post. That makes no logical sense based on your data, and this is a group that has done over 300 searches, 75 in the last six years, that said February 26th to post was reasonable.
With all due respect, remember, Hartman, were you not in the same executive session that I was in? I don't believe that ASDA is going to always try to set us up for shit.
I was in the same session you were, never left the room, and I just have a different takeaway and interpretation of the conversation.
And I would say, and theoretically, it started there last.
So, and they closed.
When? We have, we have had some obstruction to skinny, but it's not impossible.
We are going to be greatly, we are going to be greatly criticized by this community for rushing through the process. We were, I was already getting criticism back in January about, like, maybe remember my comment, even back in January, make sure that this is a legitimate search process. And we are now months behind, we're going to rush through it in seven weeks or less. We're going to miss recruiting superintendent candidates, we're going to miss recruiting administrators and principals on the other end, we're going to rush our community input to the point where they're probably just going to tell us, look, you rushed your interim superintendent and you're rushing this too. Why are you doing that? It makes no sense, when we could defer and do it very thoughtfully and take our time to make sure we get the very best candidates. And that's assuming that we don't already think that Dr. Birdwell is a good candidate.
Well, to be clear, we've always encouraged Dr. Birdwell to be in the candidates.
And to that point, I'm not hearing any, I don't know, I'd like, if you're hearing something negative about Dr. Birdwell from your community constituency, please speak up now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pearlberg. Sorry, I'm here as a public servant, and certainly I have taken up the weight of rights and any prior notice, if you don't want something, I'd like you to tell me.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to jump in kind of on that note, because yes, from, at least from the community I'm speaking to, it's not about, I am dying to very, very quickly give my input about a superintendent right now. What I am hearing is, you got your gal, you know, give her more time, love, prove herself, and, and then, yes, get all the community input that you, that's going to be valid and meaningful and thoughtful. That does not happen in March during spring break, over the next few weeks. That's my opinion.
And then to that point on community input, thanks to the two of you on the bus initiative, even today, I was at the mayor's state of the city luncheon, shaking hands, meeting people I never met before, and got positive feedback about Dr. Birdwell from your constituencies, the business constituencies. He's been working so very hard, and I appreciate his effort and the momentum that's being built right now. If we just signal to the community, we're not happy with Dr. Birdwell, so we're going to go do a permanent search, we bring all that screeching halt.
Well, and my, my character, I don't know if I agree with that.
Never mind our principal comments that we've all seen.
Can I? Ms. Pearlberg.
I need you to find. None of my comments are reflective of Dr. Birdwell's performance at all, not whatsoever. All I'm suggesting is we've made a series of board decisions and public meetings that said we're moving forward with the process. All I'm saying is I want to honor the process if it's possible. That's it. Guess what? Dr. Birdwell's in the process.
Do you, so do you think it's, I mean, again, you want to rely on ASDA to tell you it's possible. I want to rely on my judgment as a board member, serving this district, is this, is rushing through a superintendent search process in seven weeks or less, serving our constituents and our kids and our employees, are we doing our due diligence in signing a contract with someone for the next three years? We're going to take, we're going to rush through seven weeks to sign up for the next three years.
I, I just feel that statement is just passive judgment, that's all.
It is, those are my judgments.
And all I'm saying is, and all I'm saying is, I trust a qualified provider. Now, I'll apply my own judgment, because they may come back and say, can't be done, or we feel as though it's not in your best interest, which, that's funny, too.
But we're in the situation that we're in of having to defer the search to begin with because of the provider that you deemed qualified. It's circular, it's circular argument. So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we defer the superintendent search process with ASDA until next year and extend Dr. Birdwell's contract. We can't, what do I say? And just defer until next year.
If you want to move to defer until next year, it'd be better if you could specify, if you're talking fiscal, school, calendar year.
I move that we defer the ASDA contract to fiscal year 167.
And then the extension of contract, you can't vote on that, you can talk about And then the extension of contract, you can't vote on that, you can talk about wanting, it's not a motion, it's not part of the motion, you can talk about wanting to pursue that and then we can make a notice for another meeting where you can.
Okay, so my motion ends there.
Yeah, can you restate now?
And before we go to the motion, I'm not comfortable with moving forward on that. I have a question that I need to clarify.
Oh, more discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. I, thank you. I need to understand, we've made a commitment to the community to work through a process. I understand that this process has been derailed by two weeks because of a citizen claim that we've gotten legal advice on. Doesn't have a lot of merit, but we'll go through the investigation because there's a legal obligation to go through this investigation now. So I, what I don't understand, if we're doing all these things correct and Ms. Marshall can get us the investigation by March 3rd, then why wouldn't we see if we can still get, follow the commitment we made to this community?
Because we're, because the timeline, which was already an aggressive timeline of seven weeks, is now either A, going to be compressed even more, or it's going to stay at seven weeks and just fly and take us way into late April. So we're missing recruiting timeline, we're missing, we're using our time, effort, energy and resources on a superintendent search that we're rushing through for some unknown reason, when we can still meet the commitments, the promises made to the community, go through the process, we're just deferring the process a few months. And we're not focusing on what we should be doing, the business at hand. We need to build a bond, we need to have a bond built, we need to have a capital override built, we need to have a budget built, but yet we're going to be working on the superintendent search process. It, it's not, and our resources, and I agree, our resources are limited already. It's been, it's going to take away.
And can I just respond just really quickly, Ms. Hartman, in that the calendar hasn't changed and these other commitments haven't changed. We knew all those, the calendar hasn't, hasn't ever changed and those commitments, whether it's a bond, or whether it's an override, or whether it's our budget, those decisions also haven't changed. We know the timeline for those. So I just, I understand what you're saying, but that was an issue before and still an issue and a challenge now. We just agreed to move forward with it.
This is an incredibly complex, I mean, I talk about conflicted. I completely agree with everything you're saying, Board Member Kirby. I do think, I'm no expert, I'm certainly not an executive search professional. It seems very aggressive, it's always seemed aggressive, and now it's being compacted even more. And I too am quite concerned about a legitimate search being done in that timeframe, but again, I'm not an expert in this area. And I have huge confidence in Dr. Birdwell as well, it couldn't be higher. On the flip side, I absolutely agree with Board Member Hartman and Board President Smith, and did set a process, and I made personally commitments to community members initially that we would follow a process. And there was initially when we first were starting this process, and that we would offer the interim superintendent a six-month contract, and that time we would follow a process for a permanent search. And we were very concerned, like you said, about the, how quickly we did the interim search, and I said, don't worry about that. Interim, we are, we have a process, we're going to move forward. So frankly, I don't know what the right answer is on this. And I guess I have a question at the end of this, is, is it possible that we could bring ASBA back, considering where we are now, which is not where we were two weeks ago, bring ASBA back and ask them to show us a revised timeframe for a search starting on this new timeframe that we're potentially looking at after this delay? And I'd like to talk to them and have them prove to me, or ask questions about how they could possibly do this in now, much shorter timeframe. And also, Board Member Kirby brings great points about, has the window closed? Have we lost the ability to get absolute top people to apply? I'd like to ask those questions to ASBA now that we have a new situation before I make any decisions on this, and, and then come away from that, hopefully armed with correct information to make a better decision on this whole thing. Because I have, I've got, not answer, but I did make commitments to community members that I take very seriously about the fact that there's a process we're going to follow. Having said that, we're in a different world today than we were two weeks ago. So I guess I'm asking you, President Smith, can we bring ASBA back?
I can't. I, I would agree that I think before I can make a decision, I would need more specifics, which we could do next week, which is what I suggested. And that also gives, more accurately, your community member, if, you know, how they feel about it, if this is something they want to address now, if it's something they want to address, and you're, whatever timeframe, four times, it's perimeter.
I'm struggling right now, as I hear you say, and George is saying at the same time, a defined process existed. To me, what always existed, the process was a process of finding a superintendent that involved community input, that involved a, a strong, legitimate search for the best candidate that we can, again, even if some of us may think we already have that person. But all of those factors, that was the defined process. We want to find the best superintendent to lead our district in the future. I'm struggling to understand how this board at any point promised that that, that process included a timeframe that had a deadline of June 30th. Because what any individual board member here promised a certain group, community, or a small group of community, to me, and they're sitting in this room right now, with five of us, is irrelevant. We promised this to find the best superintendent that we can. And I know for a fact this board repeatedly discussed the possibility, even before all these delays, we discussed the possibility that if that search could not truly be productive and we were not brought to a confident place, it could possibly extend an additional eight, another year, to an 18-month period. From day one, that I felt was a promise to our community as more, as part of the process. So I must say here, right now, I don't care, I mean, I kind of agree with Board Member Kirby, I don't care next week if ASBA comes back and says, don't worry, we can find you the best person in two weeks or three weeks, or by May 1. Because, I'm sorry, I understand, yes, an individual has slowed us down, but also actions prior to that individual coming on the scene slowed us down. This is our judgment call. What do we think is best? And I, again, I think it's pretty clear, and I feel we are keeping the promise to the community that this will be a thoughtful, real process that will deliver them the best leader possible. That's our promise. I don't think we can do that by May, or May 30th, or whatever. And I think this board could decide that today, but I obviously leave it up to that same question.
And to that point, also, we did ask the community to trust us when we did the interim search. And I'd like to say that there was probably a lot of skepticism that everything was going to be okay if the board just made that decision without the community input. And again, we know, in our practice, that we always involve, they have that expectation, they always have that expectation, our teachers have that expectation. I would like to say we asked the community to trust us, and by and large, they're, they now are happy with the decision that we made for interim. They weren't before we made it and before they met Dr. Birdwell. So what I, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, yeah, a lot of people second guess why we do things and how we get there. My take on it is that we need to respect the process. Yes, we've got a little bit of a hiccup, but the expectation out there was that we were moving forward with the, with the search, according to two votes. I understand the one vote was just to ratify the vendor. But it shouldn't matter, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to honor the process and it shouldn't matter if the individuals that are involved. We shouldn't change the process because of individuals involved. As a professional.
But no one is asking you to dishonor the process. The process can still have, and it actually will be a richer process because we won't be rushing through it in seven weeks. I mean, why, I'm struggling to understand why, why would you want to choose a seven-week superintendent process over a three-month, a 12-week, a 16-week, a 20-week superintendent search process? That's, that's very inclusive of our business leaders, who you've worked very hard to get the momentum, and we do have momentum with our individual site-based community, with our teachers. There are so many different constituency groups, which is why most of these superintendent search processes are much longer than seven weeks. Most of them go, Kyrene started back in November. And, and I don't know if, I, districts our size don't do this in seven weeks because they won't be able to touch and hear from all of those very important constituency groups. So tell me why you want to do that versus a more thoughtful, all-encompassing, deliberate, we can, when we do something fast, we've learned, we don't communicate very well, or we don't communicate very well, period. But if we do it really fast, that communication's going to be hampered even more. If we do it in the fall, or late fall, early spring, whenever that right time, ASBA even says, the time to do it is January, we're now in March, so the expert has already told us January's the right time to do it. Why wouldn't, why are you choosing a seven-week rush timeline versus a very deliberate, slow process?
I think to that point, a good portion of the beginning of a process is getting the word out there. The word is out there. People are waiting to be asked. People are waiting for us to begin this process. They've had a lot of time to decide what they want to see in the superintendent. Dr. Birdwell's leadership may have helped them hone that in at this point. It's not like we're just starting the announcement, it's not, the knowledge is not on the street.
No, maybe, but when I'm talking about a four-month process, based upon the research I've done, it's, the start date is when the job posting hits. So they, those other districts also have the benefit in the weeks and months leading up to that, to get the word out. Then there's a four-week, a four-month process. So it's still, it's apples to apples, it's a seven-week versus a four-month.
Let me ask this question. Are you, and I apologize, I shouldn't, I'm going to ask a question. Is this a national search or are you looking for Arizona superintendents?
We haven't had that discussion. We haven't even had that discussion.
Because there are two separate processes. There truly are two separate processes. When you're doing a national search, you can rely, Oregon's one, aside, Washington's, and the other outside, when they're doing a national search, it is a six to eight-month process. And the reason for that is, there is the meetings of the communities to give the description of the leader that they're looking for, the expectations of that, so that when the marketing material is put together, it can all communicate, vision, direction, very specific. The brochures that superintendents look at, one portion of the brochure is to let me know who you are, the community, the other portion of the brochure is to let me know who you are seeking. And it's not as simple as speaking, it's not, you have a doctorate, a degree, and you have years of experience, et cetera. They are very specific about the individuals that we are looking for. And they have typically a long list of the characteristics, the, you know, community collaboration, understanding of, of title schools and, and advanced learning, they, all of those pieces are wrote into that description. A long list of characteristics, typically there's a long characteristics of the superintendent of which you are seeking. That's when you're looking for a national search, because that's looking for the best fit that comes in. And you've done these here in Scottsdale before. That said, there's a month or two of just meeting with the community, gathering information, putting together appropriate marketing, then you get the marketing material out there for about 30 days so that you're attracting national candidates. Then there is a vetting of that through a paperwork process. And then there is an interview process. And the interview process isn't a one-time process if you're doing a national search. It's a typically three-series process. So there's the, you know, 10, 12 candidates that get interviewed, then the narrowing down to about six candidates, and then the narrowing down to three candidates, and there's typically community forums, with the community asking candidates questions. It's a, a national search is a very different process than if you're just looking for an Arizona superintendent. I have to share that with you.
This may be the, a better question for Ms. Marshall, because she could refer to the actual, maybe, response, but I can say that we actually did have the conversation with ASBA and that what, my, the answer was, it was a national search. And we even talked about the national, it was a national search. And so I'm assuming that's in the timeline, but maybe that's the ability.
They have the, they have the connections to do a national search, if that's what we're requiring, if that's what we ask for.
I don't know what this says, I, I just assumed this timeline.
If you think their ability means that my postings are out there and they're connected to the other school boards associations across the nation, so you're going to have the exposure of national.
Right.
But a national, you don't typically put an application process on a national search in a two-week, two-week window and expect national candidates to take that apply and make arrangements to come in and do interviews. It's just, that's what I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be true to what you want to do, I'm just trying to say, it is an unusual period to say that in seven weeks you're going to do a national search. That's, that's uncommon.
Yeah.
You know, and I've gone out in other states and done those interviews, so it's not given with a seven-week process.
And so I guess, is there a reason why we have to have the search completed by April, I think in here they said April 8? Is there a reason?
Probably for recruiting personnel, would be my guess.
Exactly. Because April 16 is statutory. But I never, in my mind, pictured, we actually had until June because, yes, the season, that has always been a question some days.
That's why it's the end, it ends along on June.
You can extend that all the way, you want the superintendent to take spot July 1. That's true, the contract doesn't start until July 1. The issue that you run into is that superintendents usually have a hiring season, and they use your own number to evolve February. And then is the season of hiring principals and associates and executives and directors that actually run anywhere from January to March. And simultaneously, it's February to April to hire the principals, because principals have been told now, they've made decisions, they've moved their district, they've noticed their district before, they're looking for jobs that are out there. So right now, right now, we're, is the hiring season for principals. Everybody's hiring principals right now. You get another month down the road, candidates begin to, if you look at Chandler's website, you look at Mesa's website, you look at Kyrene's website, look at everybody that's there right now, they're hiring their principals right now. And that's, so mine is a superintendent, that's the hiring season in Arizona. Part of that is, the teachers want to know who the principal's going to be before they turn in a contract. Teachers want to know that. Teachers want to know, the principals, the principals want to know who they're looking for. And we can have the debate on that all day, but typically a principal, it does matter to a principal, who they're going to. And on stable districts, get a different pool than stable districts get. That's the reality of our world, and I wish I could say that differently to you. So your interim is telling you stability matters.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah. This is Kirby.
Okay, so the other point I'd like to make is, I, I, I'm worried about looking a gift horse in the mouth somewhat because kind of feel like we're just, we're all happy. I think we're all happy. Think with Dr. Birdwell. I know our community's very happy with Dr. Birdwell. There's no guarantee that Dr. Birdwell's going to put her name in the hat. We may lose her. We may lose her. Other, Peoria's looking right now, too. And, and, and just to continue on because the stability of leadership is what made me think of it.
Yeah.
Again, I'm going to come back to, we have so much momentum. We have now a very, our community is embracing Dr. Birdwell. We are getting that momentum. We can carry it into the ballot season, the November season, the bond season. I'm feeling very good about all of that. And I am not, I am not at a place where I want to accept that.
Well, and to add on to that and Dr. Birdwell's comments of, you know, worried about losing her in this process as well, let's think about all those principals out there right now considering possible changes or looking for a job and the difference between coming to our district with a long-term interim superintendent, has a lot of support by our staff, by our other principals and teachers, versus a short-term interim superintendent that the board is rushing through a search for a different one possibly, you know, perception of, their board is rushing through for a searcher. Let's picture about losing those leaders as well. Adding that layer.
I'm not, Ms. Parker. So when you say long-term, are you saying to forego the search process?
I from very, very early on perceived the possibility that this first process, that again, we all are deeply committed to, can take up front between six to 18 months. That has always been the question. So, yeah, I'm struggling to understand why you're saying, you know, we're going to process, we're forgetting the process, we're breaking promises when we're simply saying, go to that Plan B of an 18-month interim process so that this search can be meaningful, fruitful, real, and actually build confidence in our community rather than they're rushing us through. I'm on spring break, I can't make my, you know, that type of perception. That's, I'm struggling to understand.
To that point, an 18-month search is?
I'm talking about an 18-month interim. So that's, during, during which you basically have covered, because I think from the very beginning, I thought we're going to have kind of a half a season to find a superintendent and we might need a whole season to find a superintendent. That was always the initial question of would ASBA, if, if we couldn't get through in that very short season, which now has become incredibly shorter for us, that was always my understanding is that we would quite possibly bleed into the next season and need our interim superintendent stay for 18 months. That, I, again, I don't feel like breaking any promises. I don't understand why we wouldn't choose that right now, especially since that half a season has already gotten much, much, much shorter. And who am I so happy? I just, just not following that. Happy, please speak up because I, I usually hear from unhappy people. I'm not hearing from anyone. I do. I mean, to be honest.
Right.
And so tell me, and we've seen our principals' comments, I just, a lot.
Well, I mean, I would like to propose that we resume this conversation next week.
There's a motion on the table with all three of us.
We have a question.
I second it.
I don't even know it's a motion.
Can you help us with that?
And maybe we, and maybe we need to drive this first. I, I mean, again, I want any confusion. I don't think we've made any decision at this point to try and change any comfort or vendor that's, I'm not, we're not talking about that.
She made a motion to defer the search process with ASBA until next year and extend the superintendent.
But I can't do the last part. So I'll clarify, just to provide some comfort to everyone, defer the superintendent's search process until no, about, no earlier than November 1st of next year. I don't know if there's a better way to give us more flexibility. Well, I think, when do they usually start? November?
I think they say fiscal year 16.
Fiscal year 16, 17.
Or, or, uh, school year, sorry.
Or even fall.
Oh, maybe this.
Fall of, of the 16, 17 school year. How does that sound? I'll just make it broad. Just all the superintendent's search until the, until fiscal year 16. Next year, next school.
I feel as though we had a conversation and no conclusion on the implications of the question, what board member Jackson proposed, which is, why, why wouldn't we just continue through, not saying you can't do that, but saying why wouldn't we just continue through the process that we've already committed to and meet with the executive search firm and find out if it's even reasonable?
Because board member Hartman, I mean, I feel like I do, I did answer your question, but we are now looking, it's for what we've been talking about for the past hour and a half. We are now looking at a very compressed timeframe. We, we are missing recruiting windows of both superintendent and administrators and then therefore certified personnel. We are rushing our community through a process. I, my motion's on the table because as a board member, I am ready to stand up and say, I'm doing my due diligence, I'm serving my community and doing what I believe is best for the children, the teachers, the families, the business community, all the constituents, and I'm ready to pull the plug on this and defer it until next year. It's too much, too fast. It is, it's at the point for me where it's broken.
Mr. Pearlberg.
To add to that, I mean, especially after this meeting, we're, we're asking our community to sit for at least another week, if not more, in, I won't say chaos because we have an excellent interim leader who's, there's, there's no bad here, but in confusion and, and in that anxiety. I mean, I only speak for the constituents that I've heard from, but I get pounded constantly, when are you going to make a permanent? When are you going to make a permanent? We're now sitting here in this meeting saying, all that anxiety, all that frustration, hold on to that for another week and we'll get back to you. I, I mean, I guess that, to that point, ready to just pull that plug and, and get this community focused on all the things we should be focused on. I'm ready to be that decisive board member that can make a decision, think, feel good about it and stand by it and defend it.
I'm having some confusion because you had talked about deferring the process or extending an interim contract and now you're saying using the word purpose. So I'm now confused.
The permanent search. I'm saying, what I've been hearing from the community as far as levels of frustration and anxiety isn't about how fast you're going to do the permanent search, so I can give my input. It's more about, I guess I'll rephrase it differently. Feedback I've been getting is how, when are we going to know that we have our permanent superintendent because we think she's excellent? There is frustration, anxiety that I sense of, they're all in a holding pattern. And obviously this board wouldn't be ready in any way, shape, or form to make a permanent decision. I would never suggest that. But just the mere fact of us debating back and forth about a, an immediate permanent search, to me raises anxieties and our constituents going, are they really that unsure of this interim superintendent? Cause our, I, I mean, I guess, I, I think there's, I think there's anxieties out there that I guess, to bother with, I guess that's the anxiety I'm trying to tap into. It's, although I think.
We want the loser.
I, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm trying to say is I, I don't, I don't hear any voices saying, yeah, putting, keeping her in place, having her get us through all the incredible challenges through June, great, and we'll deal with that search next year. I just don't. I think that would ease anxiety, ease frustration, ease fear. And I as a board member, I feel very good about the trajectory that we're on. I feel very good about where we're headed with the bond. I feel very good where we're headed with capital override. I feel very good where we're headed with enrollment, which then affects our budget. If we start telegraphing to the community right now that we're not, we're not feeling so great about that, what, what goes on in the psyche of our community members who are thinking about investing in our USC, who are thinking about investing their time, who are thinking about enrolling their children? We're not really, are we telegraphing to them that we're not confident of our leadership and therefore we have instability at the top? I don't want to send that message. We need stability right now. And we're, and, and it's actually stability with a pretty damn good person that's got us on the right path. Why are you, why are we wanting to mess with that? I'm struggling to understand.
Our parents look at school free.
Hi, they're enrolling. They are.
I'm not sure that any of that would change within a week period of time, but Mr. Jackson.
This is incredibly difficult for me, I got to be honest. We are facing so many issues over the next, including the fact that the basis, that there's to prove, to build basis up on.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday. And we are now looking at, at a first, you know, obviously I'm a tremendous competitor. I mean, I personally made a lot of reassurances to community members that there was a process to follow and people that I care about and respect, but with all, everything where we are right now, and also with the fact that we're in the process now of trying to replace three principals, we're in office, we need to hire a lot of people. I agree with you.
So my motion's on the table.
Can you clarify, you said defer until fiscal year 2016, 17? I just want to make sure that we don't.
Basically what I mean is, and you can put my, put the words in, defer the search process until the normal time that superintendent's search process is kicked off.
Okay. And I want to be clear, we.
Next year.
Okay. We are deferring, we are extending the search process. This is not, we're not offering, we are extending the process for the, for the, the process to do the permanent search. This is not.
We're deferring the process. So we're going, we're not terminating, we're staying with us.
Yes.
We're deferring it until probably November next.
But we have time.
So we can be thoughtful.
That's my best.
Okay. I have a motion that I just stated.
For the process until the normal time that superintendent's search process occurs.
And.
Yes.
Is that okay? Say it one more time.
To add on this again, in the six.
Defer the search process until the normal time that superintendent's search process occurs, it's fiscal year 16, 17.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we have one more piece of discussion?
Sure.
I just want to speak to the community because, like I said, this is incredibly difficult. I had been all over the map on this for two weeks, but I just, I don't think we have the time. I agree absolutely with board member Kirby to do a proper search, especially if it's a national search. And I, that needs to be done properly. And I just hope the community understands that, that this is not anything more than, there's nothing more important this board can do than to pick, to quote another board member here, this job of selecting superintendent, and we need to do it in a, in a time, and we need to have community forums and lots of community input, and it needs to be done. And we're not foregoing the permanent search, we're extending the timeframe to do a proper job. That's how I'm viewing this, and nothing more than that. And I hope community members that I spoke to that understand that, that, I'm hoping I'm not going back on my word, I'm just, I don't believe we can do a proper search in that. As Dr. Birdwell said, and I think she's being spun on, I think the time, superintendent searches are November to February, and we're going to be in March before the season commences, and that just doesn't seem to me to be smart. So anyway.
One comment before a vote. I've always been in the position that I wanted to have a transparent, swift, but at the same time, very open process. I've always advocated so that we get the very best candidates in this position. I also believe that we as a board, to a very good interim solution. So I trust the judgment that we together collect when we have these conversations. I appreciate the conversation. I just wanted also to communicate that speaking to ASBA next week was never, it wasn't in intent to truncate an already quick process. I just really view when you hire a subject matter expert and your subject matter experts are hiring executives in public schools, that you ask for advice, that's what you're paying for. So I saw it only as adding value in speaking with them next week to find out whether they could or couldn't do it. I also believe that they could have said that, yeah, your process is a little tight. But I do believe they have more insight and more exposure to what's out there on the national and the state level than we collectively do, just have the experience. So I saw it as prudent to actually have them participate in this conversation rather than just rely on our assumptions. Having said all that, I do believe it's an accelerated process. And I'm not sure that will give us the best outcome. I just would have liked to have had their advice in the process.
Every time I clarify, sometimes you can state, you say, well, what was the account? So I'm going to use Peoria as an example. Peoria started by work second, but that's because the superintendent did not announce his retirement until later. And the reason the superintendent doesn't do that is because you don't want to lose the momentum of the district too early, and the superintendent will not sign it early. So, Kyrene, however, knew earlier that the superintendent was leaving, so they started a much earlier process. You have the advantage of not having a superintendent to do a longer timeframe because you don't have a superintendent who's the last one to call your resignation. Now, the odd part is your, your superintendent resigned and they share him while you had left you. That was the unfortunate part. In a normal process, they would have announced in, in the month of December that they planned on acquiring a junior. You would have that timeframe that you desire. So you, you got caught in an unfortunate circumstance that was beyond the scope of this school. So I want you to know that the timeframe is not giving anybody here in this room is an unfortunate circumstance. Thank you.
You're right.
Can we have a call for the vote, please? Well, one more. I think my discussion is that in, we were talking about things that we heard outside, and one of the things that we did hear, that I did hear outside was the notion to give Dr. Birdwell a permanent, just like you said, with the permanent superintendent. And I would just ask that before anything like that could possibly be considered, that, just to let the board know, that generally when you're having a superintendent search, it's a much more in-depth process than there would be without interim. And I would, I would feel more comfortable if we were able to. And I would, I would feel more comfortable if we were able to have a little bit more of that in-depth process before we make a decision.
Which decision, by any question?
Before we, before we would agree to defer until next year. I think, I think if that's a good decision today, it's a good decision next week. And we're meeting next week anyway. And, you know, maybe we can't, maybe we can't do it, but I'm thinking that there could be information between last week and, or between today and next week, that will get us to a better place than where we are right now with a lot of unanswered questions.
The time, the truncated timeline is not going to change between next week and this week. It is, it gets worse. It is what it is.
So, so the decision could be the same next week, and.
Let's just take, we look like a board that can't make a decision, I'm sorry.
I.
So can we.
Principals are looking for jobs now, parents are looking for schools now. I don't understand why, I don't understand why extending that to at least a week, again, I still say, there may be more steps beyond that week. And, and we still don't fully have grasp on how ASBA's going to turn around this investigation, or, I just don't understand how anything gets better. And I only get sort of just waiting, waiting, waiting.
And deferring until next year also allows the dust to settle from our executive session to session.
Very true.
It lets all that calm down and settle down, and we don't take any risk of moving so fast and then have to backtrack now a third time on a very important superintendent's search, that will be well behind us by next November, well behind us, yes. And we can move forward thoughtfully, deliberately, and confidently.
We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And I'm going to say nay. I would prefer next week maybe get that final, after this, right? So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.